Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of September 12th, 2023. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Mrs. Green, may I prevail upon you to read our announcements?
Certainly. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, the Historical Commission, Laquan Property Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Hanson Day will be held on the Town Hall Green on September 16th, 2023, pending the hurricane, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date for September 23rd. Local churches, businesses, and civic organizations will be in attendance with free demonstrations, games, crafts, and food. Come see us. Come see all Hanson has to offer. Upcoming meetings, Select Board meeting September 26th, 2023, and the October Special Town Meeting is October 2nd, 2023, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay, great. So, we're gonna, we've got a couple of dignitaries in our audience, which is awesome, and we so seldom have visitors, that I thought it would be of us to prioritize the October Special Town Meeting warrant review and vote recommendations. So with us, we have the Chair of the Hanson Finance Committee, Kevin Sullivan. I know most of you know him, but I'm not sure about the newer members, whether you've worked with Kevin or not. I think you worked with Mike. So, Ann Rain and Ed Hale, Kevin Sullivan, and then we've got Alan, Adam Valkovic. Did I get that right?
Pretty good.
Okay. I've been working on it, Adam. Other than calling you Alan, but, okay. So, Ms. Green, did you have anything that you wanted to point out to us that you had changed materially in any article since last week?
Yes. Madam Chair, Mr. Boy, you placed your hand on the board. So on Article 1, there was a prior year fiscal bill, unpaid bill, that did come into our office. We have added that. The department was police, and it was part of a IT patrol bill. So that was added, which brought the amount for unpaid bills up to $1,378.41. The second, let's see. So we made a change to the, basically, some of the articles. For instance, Article 5, which was our capital article, we switched that article with Article number 17. So Article number 5 is now the Clean Water Trust, which is the sum of $500,000, and that allows the town to borrow for that, and that is for residents who need their septic systems updated or repaired, that don't have the money, are able to borrow money.
That's the one Mr. Amato spoke to us about?
Yes, yes. So that is now Article number 5.
Has the text of it changed, or just the number?
Just the number.
Okay.
Just the number, yes. So, we, there.
And then it looks like you moved the Stringer Lane, Gray Lane, Alden article. Was that always that early in the process?
Yes. I don't think that was changed, yet.
Okay.
Other than two of the articles, I think there was no changes.
There were a couple of articles, as I was saying, earlier today. I didn't realize there were changes, so I had already printed out your packet, so you just inserted the pages that were included in.
Yeah, okay. That was my question.
Yeah. All right. And I believe there are minor changes, that don't change anything of substance of the article. Other than that, basically, there have not been any further changes as far as dollar amounts, content. Let me just double-check the library. Let's see.
They were gonna tweak the language, but I-
They were gonna tweak the language, however, the trustee chair did review the language, and she was happy with how it was presented. So she found there was no need to update the language-
Okay.
-for the library article.
That's for the sidewalk?
That's for the sidewalk repairs, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so you'll see that Article 5 is now Article 17. And there's been no changes as far as the article itself, with no additions, reductions, or increases on any of the dollar amounts for Article 17.
All right, so let's get to it. So tonight, we want to, we're going to be voting to recommend, and we need to close the warrant, because Ms. McDowell needs to go to print this Friday, or somewhere in this week, anyway. I think it's Friday. So, Mr. Sullivan, where are you guys at with discussing? Do you philosophically at least have a grasp on the articles that you're grappling with, or?
So I can, I can give you a brief sort of rundown of where we sit.
Okay, yeah.
Where we're leaning, how we're gonna approach our vote, and that.
Okay, great.
So, if you indulge me-
Yeah.
... I'll go to this relative to what we do. We, I just talked with the town accountant, right? Our FY 2024 budget was approximately $34 million. The Mass Municipal Association, as well as the Department of Local Services, recommends that a free cash balance of 5% be kept in reserve of your total budget. Right now, at a $34 million budget, that would require us to have a free cash reserve of $1.7 million. If we spend all the free cash that we've allocated in these articles, we'll be in the balance, it hasn't been certified, but Eric and I in our discussions believe it could be anywhere between, we'll have a balance of $300,000 to $400,000, which is well below the 5% threshold. That 5% threshold is recommended by the state to maintain bond rating-
Yes.
-to maintain rainy day scenarios. We're estimating that come the springtime, we'll be, have a deficit over a million dollars.
Okay.
And we all know what that's, that's top of 2.5% override, that's top of, so we're taking a hard look at a lot of the free cash. I've never been a opponent of using free cash in an operational budget, and I know we're talking about October, but October feeds right into the next year. So my recommendation to my board members, and the way some of us are leaning far, is to maintain the highest possible balance of free cash possible. Now, I understand that promises were made, things were discussed. October has generally been a period where we get some projects done, that we, some nice-to-haves. So there's a real concern right now that with the balance, you know, we're, we're under, we're under 1% of free cash balance.
If everything's funded.
If everything's funded, as is in the warrant. We're under 1%, which is, you know, we've used, when the school realignment happened, and we had to change our budget procedures, we use free cash to bridge that, right? We edit the override and use some free cash in response. We use some free cash to fill the holes traditionally, that's been our process, because we don't have commercial industry, because we've been, for so long, have the lowest tax rate possible, which is great. As a citizen, I love it. As someone who's responsible for putting us in the best financial position possible, it's not great. So, our thought is, we need to maintain the highest level of free cash. So are there things that can be trimmed out of this?
Okay.
That's the way we're sort of approaching it right now. Again, the vote is always with the townspeople, and they can vote it down to zero free cash if they want, but I will, you know, this is my warning for the springtime, that we're gonna be right back in the same position where we're talking about overrides, where we're talking about cuts, where we're talking about just not having the revenue base to support what we're doing now.
Well, to be clear, we're going to be having that conversation-
Absolutely.
-even if you trim to the bone now. I'm not saying throw caution to the wind now because we're having that conversation, but I just want to be clear that it will soften the blow a little bit-
Yes.
-but it's not going to completely-
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
We've always been able to go in and say, and soften the blow, as you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, hey, we're gonna spend $1 million of free cash to bridge it, and we also need the citizens of Hanson to pick up a portion of it. And that's sort of how we've gone, as you know, for many years.
Yep.
However, we're reaching a critical point, mightily, where we go down below a certain threshold of free cash, it's just not gonna be there in this process.
I mean, we haven't voted on this as a board, but none of us want to affect the bond rating.
Right.
None of us want to go below 5%. We're in the process of, as you know, having some financial projections done, you know, we definitely, we did not have the solid numbers yet from Eric, so it's good that we've got those. I think that's going to definitely shape some of the decisions that we make tonight.
And so I would say coupled with that, with, we're talking about bond ratings, this is the third cycle, second cycle, we haven't put any money in stabilization, which had the potential to affect our bond rating going forward. So, you know, we're really, I understand that, you know, there's really, you look at, you look at this, and it looks very innocuous, there's not anything really egregious in this budget, in this, in these articles, that you could say, no, we don't need that. They all have their merits. I struggle because we're approaching, I think, a critical point where, I mean, we, many of us went through this last time, right? The last time, we're sitting there talking overrides, 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 and people are gonna listen to this and say, he's crazy, he's out of his mind, he doesn't know what he's talking about. We're gonna be there again. So I think the board might, you know, we haven't, we're gonna go vote here in about 45 minutes, but I think we're gonna learn, lean towards fiscal conservatism, and really tighten down, so.
I think that's a good objective, and just FYI, we did manage to put a very modest amount in stabilization in the May Town meeting.
Okay, good.
I mean, it's very, again, it's not a game changer, but it was just, you know, just a little bit of an overture. So, okay, so lay it on us, I don't know how, if you wanna kind of, with, that's a good lens for us to look through, and-
That's the same way.
Yep.
I, again, I look at this, and I don't see anything really egregious, and there's nothing really that you could say, oh, we could do without, but we start talking about generator adapters, right? Good to have, can it be paid for something if it's an emergency, emergent repair? Have we always come through that way, making up with it snow and ice year after year? Yes. You know, again, there's some things that can't be avoided. We have to, we have some school transportation issues, right? In Norfolk, we can't avoid, we can't do anything about that. We're responsible, we're on the hook. So, you know, there's not a lot of flexibility in this. You go through, and then you start talking about, we'd like to do capital projects in October. Capital projects, can we get by, you know, of a capital project for another cycle, or is it worth throwing caution to wind to fund some of these, I mean, I wouldn't even call them full capital projects, right? We're talking some improvements to, I think, Hanson Mill and Indian Head.
We deferred those from the May Town meeting-
Absolutely.
-because we were up against it, and we, we did incur the wrath of several members of the school committee, because we had not funded them. But that doesn't mean now's the right time either, so.
Right. And, you know, and then, so you look at other things, you look at Article 28, Route 58 crafts, it's important, because if, you know, this is preventative maintenance we're doing, is this gonna be a $10 million project if we don't do this? So, it's really, I think we're at one of the tougher positions I've seen, you know, we've done this many times in October, and just breeze through October, in and out with the articles of October. It's not really, this is when we expend free cash. This year, I'm not as optimistic about spending all of this money. I, you know, it is, you know, repairing, crack ceiling on Route 58 is important. How does it cost us six months from now? I don't know.
Yeah.
Or do we, do we take it and say, hey, listen, we need these capital projects, let's do it now? We're worried about the spring and the spring, but, you know, we've done this, every year we do this. We're worried about the spring and the spring, and then the spring comes, and we're, you know, we're talking about cutting people's jobs, and I don't think anyone wants to do that.
No, we do not want to do that.
I think those are, again, there's not a lot to it, there's, there's-
Were there any other ones that you just felt like, you know, you had kind of a little bit of a violent reaction to, or, you know?
I don't think so. I think we're talking, you know-
The capital improvement, and then the highway?
Again.
Yeah. No, I know you're not saying, I know, I definitely hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
You're not saying, these things don't need to be done.
Right.
You're not saying, these things aren't important. You're just saying, we've got to have more free cash, and if we have to cut somewhere, this would be the priority versus some of these other things that seem to be absolutely necessary.
When you weigh this against-
Yeah.
-someone's job security in spring-
Yeah, yeah.
It's sort of where we are. Do we look at grants? Do we look at other avenues? And again, we made promises in May that we would fund in October, and, you know, traditionally, we play it very, we run a razor-thin budget, and there's really not a room, a lot of room-
We did caveat, saying that it was based on what free cash we had, because we really had no way of projecting that.
And again, the town accountant hasn't finalized the free cash, he hasn't certified the state yet, but we believe it's gonna come in at around $1 million. So with maybe just the worth of $1 million, what we're still spending, almost $800,000, so.
So if we cut, if we go with what you're saying, and we cut the capital improvement articles and the highway, we're looking at like 550, roughly 550. What would that bring us to for, for free, for free cash? Would it bring us to the 5%?
So the 5%, by my math, is 1.7, so we don't even have that now. If we didn't spend it down, we still don't have, because I think Eric is being, Eric and I were just talking, and he's being a little conservative in a million, so maybe it comes in anywhere from $1 million to 1.2 million, which is reasonable. We're still, we're still south of 5%. Basically, for the Division of Local Services and the state, you know, they can say, the absolute minimum you can dip is 3%. 3% is just above $1 million. With regard to our $34 million budget, that was last cycle, so 30, I'm basing it on the last fiscal year's budget. We all know that budget is gonna be higher next year, so you would wanna lean towards the 5%, the 1.7 million, but that's, we don't even have that if you spend nothing. So, that's where we are.
All right. Spending nothing is probably not an option.
I understand.
Yeah. But, but spending less is an option.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I think any, any amount we can save and put away for, again, I hate using free cash for an operational budget, but it's gonna come down to that. We're gonna have to do, you know, the handshake agreement between, with the town and say, we need your help, we'll, you know, we'll do what we can, and we'll have to go forth again, so.
And Ms. Green, do we know if Mr. Kentschaff has gone through every article that was ever allocated at town meeting to make sure that to the extent there was any money left over, or somebody took a sharp left when we thought they were taking a right, and it, the money is no longer needed, that we've moved that money?
So he has gone through some of the articles, and actually, some of the money is incorporated, you know, already been counted to fund some of these. The schools have, John Stanbrook has sent emails with capital items that have been approved at past town meetings, that the money can be released. The capital item didn't come in as what, the budget came in lower, so.
And that was about $87,000?
Yes.
Yes, okay. But Eric's already incorporated that, so it's not some, okay.
Exactly, yes, yes. He was going to join us, but he's probably still working on closing points.
He was, he was working on it, has to speak, so that's why I would say.
So he has done a review of that, and we've approached the schools about releasing some of the, the capital articles from years past that they haven't used yet, and so some of that money has been released and accounted for in this.
All right, and so have they completed their analysis of what will be released? Or is that like an installment of what will be released?
Probably an installment of what will be released. I believe they're still working on calculating. We don't know with some of the older articles, if they've actually spent it or not. Oh, actually, here we go, Eric and, you know, there are still some of the older ones from FY19, FY20, FY18, that we were never invoiced for, so we're just waiting to see where they are with that.
Okay.
We've, we've brought it up to them, and we're waiting-
Okay.
-for work from there.
All right, well, that's a very timely appearance, Mr. Kentschaff.
Wow.
My ears burning.
We're, we just had a conversation with Mr. Sullivan, in which he, you know, talked to us about the need to have the 5% free cash, the ideal of having the 5% free cash so that our bond rating isn't impacted, and he really focused on two articles in particular that might help bring us up a little bit further for free cash, which would be the capital improvement articles, or article, but it's multiple items, and then the highway article of $100,000. So that's about 550, but even if we don't spend that money, we're still precariously low in the 3%-ish or so. Is there any good news you wanted to share with us?
Well, you do have money to save the leisure, but so that's, that's good. So usually when the bond rating agencies look at the bond balance reserves, they do look at, you have your free cash, like designated bond balance, they also look at your stabilization fund too, so they don't look solely at the free cash. So the minimum that they want between the two of them is like 5%, 5%. So, I think, you know, you give the, it's, give the, I mean, precariously, like, we're unthinking this, but I think you are at, at 5%.
If we forego this, those two articles?
Well, in my opinion, I think you'd be at the 5%, even if you did the, those articles, because if you use a combination of what's in the stabilization plan and the free cash together, so it's just like a value-
I know, but then we get into this one-time use of money, and it just goes on, and-
But you can't go back, you can't, yeah, you can't go wrong by not using one-time uses of money, because all through that, all through that warrant, there are like operational stuff that's in there, that when you look back, like, I think everyone agreed, hey, that, that probably should have been in a budget, so that would have, if it was funded, we wouldn't have that money in the budget, like, for example, like, the testing for, I mean, the building for the ambulance, like $20,000, and there's like overtime.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a lot of stuff that seems like you've got to leave, so anything, any hard decisions that you can make financially that save free cash has definitely been a benefit to the town this year, but also projecting out to next year.
Yep.
Because you'll look back and say, ah, thank God I did that, or, or since I did this, now it's-
Well, very seldom are we going to regret not funding something. No, I mean, you know, it's like, there might be some occasion, but very seldom, because it's like, I don't know, I guess it's that savor part of me that's like, can we, can we mitigate a little bit whatever we're about to encounter?
Well, when you're banking capital purchases, like, my financial point, you actually kind of generate a cash flow, like, is this gonna, is this project, like, will it do new windows? Are we projecting out if we do new windows, it's gonna save this much in energy costs, so the cash flow kinda makes sense, like, that's a value. So if you look at, through the articles, using free cash, like, a lot of that stuff, you know, just for operation expenses, it's just net out, so you think about capital, you think about like the return on your investment in capital, too, so.
Yep, okay. Ms. Green, yeah?
For me, too. So I received a little bit of an update regarding one of the articles, regarding one of the transportation articles, specifically for, under Article 3, for Article 2, I'm sorry, line item 2, which is the North Fork Agricultural High School.
Okay.
So there's discussions that are happening regarding the responsibility, which, which school district is, is responsible, and there's movement towards the new district becoming responsible for the, for that transportation.
And that would be for the-
North Fork Agricultural, line 2.
So is that the full enchilada there, the full 63, or is it a portion of it?
If we were to provide the transportation for the full 180-day school year, that would be the total amount. But there's discussions right now on transferring, the student being transferred to the regional school district of where they're being housed right now, which would, that, that school district would then bear the responsibility of transporting the students, so it would no longer be our responsibility.
I mean, that's awesome, but it's still in flux, right? So we have to prepare as though we have to pay-
Right, right, so just a little update that there is that talk, so we may not see that much, but, you know, for now, it's there, but we hope for the best.
Okay.
And I don't know if you've already discussed this, I'm sorry to pause, I'm coming late, but as far as the school articles go, I mean, there are some old articles that we can reappropriate, so if you wanted to split the baby, too, you could say, I mean, we will not use free cash for those articles, but we will allow you to reappropriate other articles that would, for the school's debt expense, so that's just a thought.
Well, so are we, yeah, so I knew there was 80-some-odd thousand that we, you know, that they, I guess, re-appropriated, or whatever, that they told us that we could-
Right.
-take back. Is it your impression that that's a final number, or are they still working through the rest of those articles?
They're still definitely working through the rest of the articles.
So I, you know, I would very much like to see if they might be able to expedite that process, so that the articles we have for the schools might be paid for with money we had already allocated to the schools.
They would consent with it, as well.
I think it would be a win-win.
Yeah.
And I very seldom use that phrase, so I, it would be one of those situations where we would be able to do that, because I know there was, people were very upset that we had not funded those in May. Some people were very upset. I'm, I'm still very unclear on whether the district moved ahead with implementing those changes, and this is more of us reimbursing them type of thing, because I don't think they held them up, particularly at the, like, the high school level, which would be shared with Whitman, and Whitman had appropriated money for those, so I don't know, but, so Ms. Green and Mr. Kentschaff, if you guys could continue to press and have conversations with Mr. Stanbrook about seeing if they can finalize that analysis of what money they may not have used that was already allocated to them. It's not gonna be everything, but it's something. Any other thoughts, Mr. Sullivan?
So that was, can I just say, that was $86,000, so it's really 236-
Correct, yeah.
283 of free cash.
Well, Eric had already, Eric, you had already included that 82-
82 million, I included 82 million, so.
82,000?
82,000.
Please, please give us that 82 million.
82,000, I already included 82,000, so it was left of all that article, we're, if you were to, if you were to vote to fund everything, you would need 239,000 in free cash in addition to the 82,000.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, that's what I, yes, that's what I was thinking.
So that's essentially what you're doing, the same thing, yeah, okay. Mr. Sullivan, any additional words of wisdom?
The, the final, I will make the final unpopular statement that, I believe it's correctly from November, when we set the tax rate, I would advocate for raising taxes, and it's gonna be unpopular, and I'm on record as saying, and I live in this town, I pay taxes, no one wants to pay higher taxes, but when we, if we don't do something now, we are going to be in some significant dire straits when we get to May, to be happy.
And do you have a recommendation on what that rate should be?
I'm gonna look at the numbers, Eric and I are talking about it, I've got, I'm comparing it to the towns around us. I did that comparison last time, when we were talking about the override, and I mentioned that Hanson is well below the average tax rate.
That's why we live here.
Absolutely.
No, I, and, and-
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
He, trust me, he's extremely fiscally conservative.
And I hate more than anyone to say, but for the, the town, even though the town we have, the base level services we have right now, we start out every year at about $1 million, a little deficit. So if we can look at some of those numbers and say, then we can never know for sure what we're looking at in May, but project out to May, what we think is gonna be close, and again, it's always one of those handshake deals, if we have a million and a half of free cash, and we spend half of that to ease the pain on the citizenry, but to continue at this town's level and the services we enjoy right now, it's only getting worse.
It's not sustainable.
It's not sustainable. So that's the only thing I'll say, the last unpopular statement of the day.
Yeah, but it's interesting, I don't remember historic- Yeah, but it's interesting, I don't remember historically the select board ever voting a different tax rate than what the Board of Assessors had recommended. I never remember that happening.
And?
I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying I don't remember that ever happening. Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just as well as, they've never done it, and it's why, in my belief, just from a math standpoint, and Eric could probably back it up with the actual numbers, it's why we are where we are, right? For many years, when I first started on FinCom over 10 years ago, we still didn't have fully-staffed fire or police departments, right? We've gotten all these departments fully-staffed. We've tried to bring every department back to the level of staffing that they want. People are trying, people are adding positions, because the citizenry wants the level of service that most people need. What they always forget is hand-in-hand with that, is that all costs more, right? We're not building, we're not building that many more houses, where we don't have that much commercial value. You know, I think when I did the numbers last time, I think it was around 95% of our revenue is the tax.
Oh, so we're, it's only 5%?
Yeah.
It might even be less.
Yeah. At times, it's been 98, 97.
It's incredibly low. I'm probably thinking two years ago, because I wasn't here for May, so it was the previous May, I think it was in the 95 to 97% of our revenue is based on the town. So if we don't increase that, and again, it's, no one wants increased taxes, and previous select boards have never done it, because you're all elected, right? You raise people's taxes, you're risking your position.
No, that may be part of it, but I think the other part is ultimately, do you want the citizens to make the decision and say, we want to pay more taxes or we don't want to pay more taxes? I don't, you know, that may be philosophically a position to take, but I'm not really sure that the average Joe would understand what the repercussions of not voting for an override would be, and I'm not saying that people are dumb by any stretch, but it's a lot more complicated than it looks, you know, and there's a lot of different moving parts, so.
It took us a lot of work to get that override through last time, a lot of education, and a lot of, you know, packing town meetings, which wanted to get the job done. And even then, I think we still, I can't remember the number, but we still bridged the gap with the free cash.
Yes.
So, you know, I think we have a great town here, the level of services we, that's provided to the citizenry has increased year over year, but I think it's one of those things that if we want to sustain that, we have to, we have to bear a burden ourselves.
Okay, well, that's an intriguing, no, that's an intriguing exit comment. That's a cliff, that's a cliffhanger, Kevin, thanks.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate that. Okay, so, shall we go through, and Ms. Green, I just want to clarify, our, if, since we need to vote to close the warrant tonight, are recommendations also absolutely due tonight, or can they be done separately in a separate handout? I recall, I think I've seen that.
Yeah, only if the board cannot come to a decision on Article Two.
Obviously, we'll try, but I just, yeah.
Because the informational warrant will go out later, so that's printed later. This has to be done, because it has to be posted 14 days prior.
Okay.
So you can change the recommendation in the informational warrant.
All right, let's get down to it, shall we? So, Article One, to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of 1,061, well, actually, that dollar amount needs to be changed to sync up with the new dollar amount, because we just added up, so it needs to say 1,378.41, and we already voted to...
Mine does say that.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Where do you look at it?
That's weird. No, up here.
Oh, up here.
Yeah, the actual language of the article, not the, yeah.
We'll correct that.
Yeah, okay. For a minute there, I was like, am I looking at the wrong version?
No, no.
Okay, great. So, this is to pay prior fiscal year bills, I mean, I guess we could vote no, but then we would be slackers on paying our vendors, I don't think we really want that. So we already voted to place it, I will entertain a motion.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor of recommending?
Aye.
Okay, great. So that was 4-0. Mr. George is not with us this evening, so just note that for the record, Ms. McDowell, that would be amazing. Okay, and then Article Two, that is, to see if the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article Two dash 12, classification and compensation by deleting Section 11B in its entirety and inserting the new sections 11B as follows. And there were various changes which we had discussed in wage and personnel meetings and in our regular select board meetings, ad nauseam. So we already voted to place that, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, that brings us to Article Three, which is the, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of 114,000 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2023 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, for various town departments or take any other action relative thereto. And that would be the planning salary, the Norfolk Aggie and Bristol Aggie busing or slash transportation issue, and that's for a total of 114. We already voted to place that.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Are we liable to know about that $63,000 anytime soon before October, or is that gonna take a while? I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I know discussions are taking place.
If we do, we can amend it on the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, one of us can make a motion to amend it, we'll just have to let the moderator know that in advance.
That would be nice.
Yeah, so, so I'm sure you'll press on that as much as we can.
As much as we can, yes.
If we have the information, then great. If not, we'll be hopefully turning money back to the town that doesn't get spent, so.
Yes, that would be nice.
So I will entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, that brings us to Article Four, which is the Alden Way article, little housekeeping to straighten things out so that we're able to do what we intended to do with that, with that, those.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. That brings us to Article Five, which is the Septic Betterment.
Motion to recommend.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
If you're in favor, can we be consistent and approve first and second?
Yeah, I mean, Joe, we kind of happened so far, it's Joe.
Give it to Hannah.
Yeah. Wait, are you gonna, are you gonna make them?
Okay, she can go, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, okay, all right, so that brings...
Fine, thank you.
The crown is heavy. Okay, Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer 8,951.45 to fund the Plymouth County outreach to fund prevention, and this is coming from opioid funds.
This is not coming from free cash?
No, this is settlement funds that we get, that, you know...
It says from free cash.
Well, yes, can you explain?
Yeah, just to clarify, the state regulators didn't want us to keep in a separate fund, they wanted to afford free cash, so that's, that's last year's amount of revenue that came in, and so technically, it is gonna come to free cash, because they're making us close it out to free cash, then we appropriate from free cash.
Okay.
So it's like a distinction with a little slight difference, but that's basically, that's the reason why we appropriate.
But it's money we got.
Exactly, equal to the penny.
We put money into the free cash in this amount, but we're taking it out.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Does that make you feel any better?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, see if the town, this is for body cameras, see if the town will authorize, upon the recommendation, a lease purchase financing agreement for the lease of body worn cameras, associated software, et cetera, et cetera, and it's in the dollar amount of $17,995.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Motion to recommend.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm sorry, yeah, oh.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, Joe had a good point.
What's that?
The motion should be, I vote to recommend.
I vote, I motion to recommend.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weeks. Article Eight, this is to change our fire fines, fire code fines. Oh, what timely, what a timely entrance. We're just discussing Article Eight, which is your fire department fines. So we voted to place that, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, fantastic. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of 73,560 from free cash to fund the overtime costs necessary to maintain adequate staffing levels at the fire department for FY 2024, and this is because there was a clerical error, and we've got folks training at the Massachusetts Fire Friday Academy. I will entertain a motion.
I'm moved to recommend.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, $395,000 from the ambulance account to purchase and equip an ambulance or take any other action relative thereto. These funds will be used to purchase and equip an ambulance, build time is 18, 24 months. Mr. Barron's and Mr. O'Brien, chief and deputy chief, we just had Mr. Sullivan here. He did not recommend that we pass over this article. He strongly urged us to pass over several others and warned us of the cliff that we're about to go over in terms of spending. And so I just thought, since this is a large dollar amount, that maybe you could explain to us the thought process for it being put into the warrant at this point.
So as it says in the article, this money would come out of the ambulance account. The money in the ambulance account can only be spent by town meeting voters. I can't spend it, you can't spend anything.
So it's not free cash?
It's not free cash. This accounts, so the ambulance account for anybody in the public that's not aware of it, we bill for ambulance services. We bill HMO Blue, Blue Cross, Medicare, things like that. This is money that, this is insurance money that goes into that account, so it's not taxpayer money, it's basically called a user's fee from your, through your insurance company. So that's what that money is for. Here's the interesting part, so we're asking for the, what was it, some 395?
395, yep.
395. That's to outfit a new E-Series gas job. So right now, you'll see F-Series trucks, which are the four-wheel drive with the boxes on it, those trucks are close to a half a million dollars. The one we're replacing is E-Series gas job. When we bought it years ago, we actually didn't think it would last the way it has lasted. It's actually worked, believe it or not, better than the diesel because of technology and things like that. The ambulance was actually scheduled to be replaced last May, we held off on it, because we wanted to see where the ambulance companies in Ford specifically was with their chassis and things. Working with the vendor that we typically use on it, that's what they came up with for number was 395, with the way that build outs are for Ford specifically with ambulances, because that's what we use for Ford chassis, he suggested not waiting any longer, because it's gonna take two years to get, which does put us a year behind what we typically have for rotation. The way the ambulances work, we actually have three online, we have, best way to put it, ambulance one is the first one always out, ambulance two is the second one always out, ambulance three serves as a mechanical spare. The way that we rotate the trucks, though, the mechanical spare is only a mechanical spare for 30 days, because then we pull another one offline to do maintenance on it. So roughly every 30 days, the trucks get rotated through the fleet. When it's done being, it goes from A1 to A2 to A3, our current A3, which would be the one that'll come offline as an ambulance, now will move as what we call the technical support unit. So all the water rescue equipment, ice rescue equipment, things like that, all get put on to that ambulance, but it's no longer for patient transport and things. So when we buy an ambulance, we typically keep them, oh, 20, 20 years, maybe a little bit more. So when you're looking at $400,000, you do it out by 20 years, it's, you know, $20,000 a year, basically, is what we're looking at, so.
Okay.
But yeah, this isn't free cash or anything like that in specific to the ambulance account. Couple of things with it, if we do get a 24 chassis, the number may come down a little bit, but we did not include the power lift stretches or anything like that with this purchase, because we're being told from Ferno, who does, Striker, who does all that for us, that we'll be able to, just for $2,000, be able to transfer all that technology into the new ambulance.
Okay, that's super helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Stachalutti, Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer $20,000 from the ambulance account to pay for ambulance billing or take any other action thereto. And it's, this is to pay comp staff for the ambulance billing company.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer 536,000 from free cash or any available funding source to Article Six of the October 2013 special town meeting or take any other action thereto. This transfer is requested to replenish funds in place for emergency management, such as providing an emergency shelter for our residents and open heating, cooling, and charging centers. These funds will stay in place from year to year for this purpose.
And that's to bring that line back up to $5,000.
Okay.
Bring it up to what?
$5,000. We keep it at $5,000.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion, okay.
Second, just from free cash or any available funding source?
Yeah, what does that mean?
What does that mean?
Shouldn't it just say free cash?
It should just say free cash, right?
Oh, yes, Mr. Kentchar.
Usually, sometimes, the law article sometimes is broad, then the motion actually carries, so sometimes, probably when they wrote it, they write it in broad terms, but if it's coming from free cash, yeah.
They should say that.
Specifically, you know, free cash. But if the article is printed like that and goes out like that, then whatever's in the motion carries.
Yeah, we tried, I think historically, as a town, we've tried to narrow that down so it's super clear what people are voting on, and I think that would be our preference, right?
I think it would be a preference, but also consistent with what we've done.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Okay, so Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell, can we whittle that down to say from free cash? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
Second.
I move to recommend.
Recommend, yes, recommend.
We already did that, that's why I was a little confused.
Well, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Article 13, to see if the town will vote to transfer 55,222,000 from free cash or any available funding source to install general, generator adapters to the Hanson Fire and Police Stations and Water Department wellfield. Now, Mr. Sullivan had alluded to this as one of the articles that potentially could be kicked down the road, but we have the esteemed Chief O'Brien here, and I think perhaps you could let us know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so I'll speak on it. I'll give you the reasoning why for this article. So a little more than a month ago, the police station lost power, and they've got the newest generator of, at least, police, fire, the wellfields. Their generator failed. So the police station on battery backup, the chief had maybe an hour, maybe a little bit more time-wise, but when the power goes out there, we lose internet, phone, you name any technology, it's gone. Fire station lost it, town hall lost it, I believe Library Senior Center also lost it, because the network is housed at the police station. The police station costs to, so what we're looking at is, so that when the generators fail, there's basically pigtails on the building, that we can bring in a MEMA trailer, National Guard trailer, or a Homeland Security trailer, that's a big generator that we can pull right up, they can plug into that generator, now you've got power. The police station costs twice as, it costs twice as much, honestly, than the fire department or the wellfield, because their electrical system is basically buried in the building. For the fire station, it's a little over $10,000, because our electrical system is right at the back of the building. The fire station, our generator is approximate, approximately 30 years old, I'm not looking to replace it, but if it dies, then that's what we're looking for. And then same thing with the wellfields, and the only reason we include wellfields in that, that's your drinking water supply.
So, but, so, I'm sorry, how much for police?
So the police station was roughly, I'll say, $23,000, and it was roughly a $10,000 and change, called 11,000 for the fire department, and another 11,000 and change roughly for the wellfield. another $11,000 and change roughly for the wellfield. I've reached out to MYA, our insurance company, I'm working on a grant with them, they would cover up to $10,000 of it. So if the town did want to, I'll say, kick the can down the road, then we should look at, okay, at least doing one building one year, one building the next, one building the next, however they want to do it. But just specifically with police and fire, because the fire station works as the emergency operations center. If we lose power, then we go to basically using portable radios and without charging stations and things for the portables, you can see the problems it creates.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Because now we bring a vendor in to, which will take them 24 hours to wire up a generator system. And historically, this happened with the town of Duxbury with their fire station.
This is horrifying. I don't, I really, yeah.
And it says, I put it, it says fire chief, I really put it as emergency management director.
Okay.
That's why, so.
My only comment on this is water has their own funds.
And that's okay.
And so I would like to see the water commissioners taking water revenue to use for the water department.
Yep.
And I know it's not a lot of money, but I just, you know, I don't want to be taking it from free cash.
Nope.
They've got their own money.
Yeah. If you'd like me to rework the numbers, and I can get Ms. Green tomorrow morning.
Do, what do you guys think?
Because we've got the actual estimates, if you want to do it that way.
Can we vote on it with reworked numbers? Like saying, you know, we'll vote with what he comes back with? Because I would like to remove the water department if we can.
Yes.
Do you guys agree with that?
Yes, I definitely agree with that.
Okay, all right. So your back of the envelope, Esther, is?
Take $10,000 off. So what is it right there?
10 or 11.
You said 11?
Call 11.
Pickle lane.
Nope, call 11. Pick 11 off.
So would say, would say it would be $44,200.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll tweak that. Ms. McDowell, are you getting this down?
No.
Now, we're gonna, is, are you going to reach out to water? Or who's going to pick up that ball?
I'll reach out to, yeah, I'll reach out to.
If the police is 23 and the fire is 11, why are we at 44?
That's a valid question.
If the police is 23,000.
Roughly.
In the fire.
And then you said fire was 10. Do you want to check your email?
I'm going off the memory, so hang on one sec.
All right, okay.
Check that because that leaves 10,000 on the table.
We're striking the "and" and "any available funding source," correct?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
You could take it out of water.
Thanks, that's good. And then we're striking water. And again, it's not that I don't think drinking water is important, but I think people have to stay in their funding swim lanes.
Right.
Do you want us to chug along and you can let us know?
Yeah, chug along. Give me, give me like five minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll just chug, we'll chug along and we'll get to 14. So 14 is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $55,000 from Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to fund exterior repairs of the Hanson Group home located at 53 West Washington Street Hanson, further identified as a successor's map lot number 92-0-28-0, and to place a permanent deed restriction on said property as presented to town meeting and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The use of the, it should say funds, shall be consistent with both Community Preservation Act funding guidelines and restrictions, as well as Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55C. Said project to be under the supervision of the Town of Hanson Community Preservation Committee, with all expenses subject to final review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment or take any other action relative thereto. So this is taking community preservation money to repair the exterior of a privately held Hanson Group home.
And have we gotten clarification on that? That we can do, that CPC funds can be used for that?
There, Kate has, well, it really comes down to whether it's rehabilitation or repair. And it's, the Community Preservation Coalition is kind of neutral about it, but they gave a letter from Housing, HH, the Housing Department, I can't remember what the initials are, saying that they felt that it was appropriate and this group home has done this in two other towns. So that, really, with some of the community preservation stuff, the only time you ever really know if it's appropriate is if somebody questions it and takes it to court and, you know, or gets a letter from the Department of Revenue. And that hasn't happened for this particular use.
Is this going to, I mean, what's in the fund? Is this?
There's enough in the fund. The Community Preservation Committee, so, you know, it's 1 and 1/2% of, anyway, I won't get into all that.
Right, right, yeah.
But it's 10, 10, and then 70. So Housing is 10% of what we get, both from the revenue from the state and the revenue from the 1 and 1/2%. And the only thing that Community Preservation has used the housing funds for was a housing production plan. So there's definitely money.
Oh, okay.
In that bucket to do this.
So what is council still finalizing?
She, that's not accurate. She's fine with it. I wouldn't say fine. She's not recommending it, but she's not, she's not not recommending it. She's neutral on it.
So how, so how can?
She was questioning, she originally did not think that this was permitted under Community Preservation.
But now she's saying it is.
Well, she, the proponent, reached out, did an end run around the Community Preservation Committee and reached out directly to our legal counsel and gave her all kinds of documentation. And then Kate said, well, it really comes down to whether it's rehabilitation or repair.
So this is a tactic I use in my, in my work. If we were to do this and spend this, would our attorneys advocate for us if we got sued by somebody? Because that's a great way to tell if a lawyer actually recommends it or not.
Well, that's a good question. I guess you could.
Would they defend us?
I guess you could, Ms. Green, you could ask Ms. Federoff. There will be a deed restriction.
It's going to be hard for me to make a recommendation on this if our attorneys won't.
And that, so there is the question of, is it permitted? That's one question.
Yeah.
Just because it's permitted doesn't mean we have to spend our money that way.
Right.
My, my issue that I would have, regardless of whether this was a group home or a private residence, which you are permitted to, let's say, a private resident came to us with their private home and wanted to do historic restoration on it, you are permitted under Community Preservation to use the money to do a historic restoration on a private home. You have to put a deed on it so that the town will get that money back if it was sold. I don't, those are not waters I feel comfortable wading into. I don't want to get involved with privately owned property using town money for restoration or rehabilitation. That's just my personal opinion.
Can we place and not vote?
You can do that. We could, we could place and refer to town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's what you guys want to do, that's great.
I think that's a good idea.
All right, so we're going to.
Have for us something else.
Yeah. We're just referring it to town meeting.
Sure. When you said privately held, I mean, it's a nonprofit organization, right?
It's not held by the town. It's not a town property, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would philosophically, if it was the food pantry, if it was the, really, anybody, I'd be, I just philosophically don't, this is just me personally, I'm not saying the board. I philosophically do not believe that money that is derived from taxation should be spent on a private entity. But again, we're referring it to town meeting, so we're fine.
I agree with that. I guess my biggest thing is, I, the minute we make a recommendation on something.
Yeah.
We're, we're saying that we know enough about this.
Right.
That we have an opinion. And if I don't have somebody that's a legal counsel telling me definitively that this is something that's even okay, that just neutral, neutral to me is not good enough.
Well, I, she, she, she's not saying, we can't, she would have told us to remove it if she didn't think we could have it.
Okay.
And she did not say that. Yeah.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion to, whatever motion you guys want to make.
I move to refer this to town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am not voting to do that.
Oh.
You're not going to what?
I'm, I am voting against that.
Okay.
I'm voting no on referring it to town meeting. I don't even think it should be going to town meeting.
So you want to take it off the warrant altogether?
Nope, nope. No, I'm deferring to you guys on your vote. That's, we voted to place it.
We did vote to place it, so now we're going to let them.
And now we're going to refer it to town meeting.
Let them decide.
And people can decide on town floor. That's, okay. So Article 15, to see if the town will vote to approve an amendment of the Hanson General Personnel Classification and Compensation Bylaw Vacation Leave, Section 12 DG, to allow employees to carry over up to 10 days of unused vacation leave. And we've discussed this several times, so. Okay, and the changes that we requested were made. Let me just double check if that's true. Yeah, okay. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. To see if the town will vote to approve an amendment of the Hanson General Personnel Classification and Compensation Bylaw Vacation Leave, Section 12 DG, with the approval of Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board to grant a newly hired employee up to 15 days of vacation leave and for the purposes of employee retention, up to five days of additional vacation leave for the existing employees by striking this section in its entirety inserting in its place thereof the following. The Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be permitted to authorize granting a newly hired employee up to 15 days of vacation leave. Employees granted additional vacation leave based on prior experience shall not have their vacation leave increased until they have five years of continuous service for the Town of Hanson, at which time they may be granted additional days of vacation leave. In addition, for the purpose of employee retention, the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be permitted to authorize granting existing employees up to an additional five days of vacation leave only if the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board deems the granting of said additional vacation days to be in the best interest of the town. The decision of the Wage and Personnel Board and Select Board shall be final and shall not be subject to any grievance procedure. And this has all been reviewed by legal counsel and has been updated for all of the various discussions we've had. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, Article 17. Well, this is where the rubber meets the road.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to transfer the following sums of money from the sources as more specifically identified below to be expended for the following capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments. Now, this is $29,572 for network switches for Indian, for Hanson Middle School in Indianhead, $62,626 for network switches for Whitman Hanson Regional High School, $158,928 for touch view panels for Hanson Middle School in Indianhead, $71,156 for touch view panels for Whitman Hanson Regional High School, and last but not least, $125,000 for infield mixed dirt. That's $447,283. Now, we heard from our esteemed chair of the FinCom that we are flirting with disaster with our free cash. And to the extent that we fund this, now, one of these articles is not.
Could you try again? This is what bothers me, is that we're, we're talking about this and including the parks and fields, and we've already said the parks and fields is going to come out of ARPA. It's not coming out of the same source.
It's coming out of ARPA, yep, yep.
It's not coming out of the same source.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
That is still money that we have that we could allocate elsewhere.
But it's not free cash.
Well, I mean, no, 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 t, well, you're both kind of right, right? So it's technically money that could be used for something else. It's not going, it can't be necessarily used for any, you know, for anything we're spending free cash on.
Correct.
So it's.
It could be let, it could be left in the account for something else that came up.
It could be. That's, that's true.
But if we're going after free cash articles, that one shouldn't be in there. I mean, free cash line items.
Is free cash our only issue? I mean, or is ARPA?
No.
You know what I mean? If we.
ARPA's a problem.
ARPA's not a problem.
What is it?
ARPA doesn't, ARPA isn't being taken into consideration for our, for the 5% for our bond rating.
And we also have to spend that ARPA money. We have a timeline on the ARPA money. It has to be spent.
Right, but I think where Ed's going is maybe there's other things we should be spending the ARPA.
In two years, there might be something else.
But he's already made the point that he can move that dirt. Doesn't have to stay there.
Yes, yes, oh, no, we understand that, that.
It's not, that's not a fixed and done issue. I just, I just don't like arguing the four and the one. To me, it's, should be, they should be separate.
I think that it was because they were all capital improvement, so they were just put into the one matrix. Mr. Kinshire, did you have any thoughts on this?
Okay, well, just for clarification on the ARPA, yes, it does have to be obligated by June 30, 2024. So you do have to spend it, but obviously you can choose, it's all just value judgment what you want to spend it on. So we don't have to, like, reserve it. Actually, if we did reserve it, not be to the benefit, you might lose it, so.
Do you know what's in that, left, what's left in our two balances?
That's a great question.
Yeah, the ARPA funds, it's, actually, there was, at least, the other day, we see it out here, I know, but it's, I think it's under, let's see.
And while you're looking that up.
$28,000. If this, it'll be $28,000.
If we spend this, it'll be $28,000.
Okay.
Right. There's one other article on here that is going to spend ARPA funds, it's the bio storage units. So if those two articles pass, it'll be $28,000 unallocated for ARPA funds.
Okay, what, there's another, there's ARPA and there's another.
Yeah, the bio storage units.
No, 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 there's another fund, there's, there's two parts to that, isn't there?
There's two different ARPA buckets.
Two different ARPA's.
Oh, the other ARPA bucket is the money that's held at Plymouth County that we can apply for.
Right. Do we know how much is left in that bucket?
Well.
I know we have to apply for it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's, we just apply for the neighborhood school, that part of it, and then I want your options left, but there's quite a bit left here, but it's just more restricted.
Right, right.
Well, okay, and it's a bit of an ADD on my part, I'll admit, but this has got me thinking, wouldn't the generator stuff that Robbie just spoke to us about be ARPA eligible? That is, it's, I think it's ARPA eligible. So could we not change, could we take some of that money from ARPA? If we're going to have $28,000 left, couldn't we take $28,000 to fund those generator, whatever it is, switches, I don't know what the technical term is, couldn't we take it from ARPA?
And not free cash?
And not free cash. I know it's not a lot of money, but it's $28,000 more.
But it has to be spent. I mean, I'm, it's not that I'm hard to spend it, but it does have to be spent.
So, um, with the Plymouth County.
Yes, that's my point.
With the Plymouth County money that we have, we just applied for $418,801 as reimbursement for the first payment of the Maquon demolition. So, that was basically all of our revenue replacement money. The, and I was thinking that myself, the generator adapters would be able, would qualify for ARPA because it's considered capital. And we have some ARPA money that has been appropriated in, through prior town meetings that haven't been completely spent. And because we, we've maintained the systems, we're getting another three years out of it, so that ARPA money that's been allocated for those particular purposes can be allocated to a different purpose.
Okay, so, um, we'll jump back to that article in a minute. Which article were we on?
Thirteen.
Okay, thank you for keeping me on.
That was Article 13 that we were talking about.
My, my brain's imploding.
We were on 17.
Okay, so, 17. Ms. Green, I did have one other question for you. Have we verified that the infield mixed dirt article is in fact ARPA eligible?
That is over and out.
Yeah, it is. This is the easiest category to figure it. The money that was actually with the town of Hanson can be spent for any governmental service, but can't use it for reserves or debt service, so it is, it is eligible.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's just a certain class, the money that the town of Hanson has can be used for any governmental service. The money that the town of Hanson has is restricted by certain things, so.
Okay, that rules this as own.
Just for clarification, as far as capital improvement goes, isn't there a set number or a set percentage of free cash that is supposed to go towards capital improvement?
Yes, which we did at the Maytown meeting. It's not every, you don't have to spend every town, every meeting.
But are we above or below that number, or?
I think Frank, Frank and Eric would have to opine on that.
Yeah, well, as a rule, um, if free cash is going towards capital, that's usually a good thing because it's a one-time source of revenue, or like a one-time investment.
Right, but wasn't there, isn't there a percentage, there, there?
I don't know if you guys, I'm not aware of any policy that you guys have. I mean, there's no, like, tried, true rule. You could, you could have a policy that says, if you want to leave X amount unexpended of free cash, you could have a policy.
Joe said 1% and we have heard that spoken about.
Yes, 1%.
1% of the incoming free cash, not like how much is sitting in the account, but like.
Yeah, well, if it's 1% of the budget, like.
It's 1% of the budget, yes.
It's a 30, 300, 40,000, so that would be the, the floor. So, if everything, we haven't got an actual free cash yet, but, um.
Well, but we, we spent.
Yeah.
That at the Maytown meeting. So, typically, those articles really typically are at the Maytown meeting. Like, we've gotten a lot of kind of what I would call, um, out of season requests, um, you know, that normally wouldn't be coming in an October town meeting, and we're trying to accommodate, and some of them were because they were deferred, like the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, um, you know, things were deferred, there were some deadlines that, you know, weren't necessarily met, and, and, but we said at the time, well, we'll try to take a look at that in October, so, so I, where are you guys at, knowing what Mr. Sullivan said? Okay, so, let's, let's like split this, this article into two, to Ms., Mrs. Rain's point. We've got the infield mixed dirt of 125, which we've been told is ARPA eligible, we know we've got the money, so there's that. Then we've got the remainder, which is 320.
Three hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Thousand dollars, what she said, of, of articles that are for the schools, for various, I'll call it technology updates, that is coming from free cash, which we're getting a very strong read that FinCom is not going to recommend, and we're being told by Mr. Kinsheriff that we're getting precariously close to a place that we don't want to be in, where we've overspent free cash and it's going to affect our bond rating.
Before coming to this meeting, I, I was a yes, and now I'm close to a no, or not to recommend.
What are your thoughts?
Uh, I think between now and the next, really, 12 months, maybe two budget cycles, you know, this board's going to have to be really transparent, collaborative with townspeople around where they want to spend their money and where they want to see their tax dollars go. Because we've done a really good job of being, we were saying, you know, we were being fiscally conservative, and that's not the right term, it's fiscally responsible, is where we're at right now. I don't think it's, conservatism implies that we have the money and we're just like trying to be.
Yes, yep.
We're not, we're trying to be responsible with it. So, I think from, from my perspective, um, this is another article that I would probably defer to town meeting because, it's not because I'm trying to punt a decision to be made, but I think at this October town meeting, that the people that show up to town meeting need to really make a decision on where they want to see their monies go, and where they want to see their taxes go. Because whether this gets funded or not, um, we're spending more and more money in free cash to fund operations and to fund salaries and to fund operational costs. You can't go back from that. So, it doesn't matter whether we do, this is just symbolic, it's really a drop in the bucket compared to a larger problem. We're starting next year with a million dollar deficit. This doesn't matter to me whether it passes or not, I think it's a good investment in the schools to fund it. I also think it's, um, it's a responsible thing to, to pass over it. There are arguments to be made on both sides. Neither one of those decisions are going to affect the way in which we have to approach the budget next year, where we're going to be having really difficult decisions regardless of this.
Okay.
So, I think, to me, we defer to town meeting and really be transparent, where do you want to see the town go? Because I feel like if we're just making decisions on stuff like this, we're telling people how they should spend their money and where they should spend it, they need to start telling us, because we've done a really good job of not raising taxes through the roof. We've done a really good job of, of stretching the dollar as far as we can. This is the year where it's going to.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
I just, I just.
Yeah.
Can this be modified on the floor so that the parks and field, in dirt, infield dirt can, can happen? That's my concern, is that it's not going to happen because it's tied to all this other stuff.
We can ask that, we can ask right now to split the article.
We, yeah, I was just actually. We split that out. I was just mentioning that to, um, to Lynn, that we, we can separate parks and fields out and put it in as a separate article, um, just as the article, just as Article, um, I believe 19.
But this is the capital improvement article.
Yeah, the only thing that's, that's interesting about this is that with capital improvement, right, the way it's supposed to be is that it's, it's essentially allocated free cash. The capital improvement comes out in charge of ARPA funds, so it wouldn't fall on this as a, as a, technically as a cap, capital improvement anyways.
Right, but you guys did recommend it as a capital improvement. It's a weird, it's a, it's in a weird.
Well, it's because the Chair is trying to do a really good job of consolidating all the different funding sources and to make it really transparent and, but stuff like this can cause little hiccups when there's, you know, issues like that, so, I think we just hold on.
Okay, well, um, so.
Sorry, maybe what we can do, Article 25, um, is the other article for the storage system.
Yeah.
Which is ARPA. Maybe we can, we can move the infield dirt to Article 25 where both of those are going to be funded through ARPA.
Yeah.
So, either that or we can, we can do it as a separate article.
I just think it should be separate, because once a capital improvement, and that, that is not a capital improvement article.
Okay.
19 is not, or 25.
25 is.
Is not a capital improvement, that's just a purchase of, um, equipment. Okay, so, just to clarify, just a moment, Mr. Young, um, just to clarify, um, we are going to split this article, we're going to keep the Whitman Hanson Regional School District piece that's being funded from free cash as a capital improvement. My suggestion, my very strong suggestion, if it's going to cause a real problem, you can let me know, would be to put the infield mixed dirt article immediately, just so all the capital improvement articles are together and there's no, um, no confusion there. Mr. Kinsheriff, um, what are your thoughts if we defer this to town meeting? Are we flirting with disaster? That's $332,000.
Um, my opinion is that, I don't think so. I think there would be a little bit of a belch, because it's, you have free cash, free cash is used for capital. I mean, the only thing that you could say is, in a budget crisis next year, if you spend it now, right, and if you wanted to do another Band-Aid next year, do you want to reserve that just in case you need it for the operating budget next year, if you want to skate through, or, that's the only thing. So, but, you know, I don't, I don't think, just a value judgment, what you want to, I don't have a problem with the funding source, and it's going towards capital, it's just a choice of what you think that's the right place to spend the money, that's what I make the decision in.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Mr. Young, and please stick to the, okay.
Just to break, break to the point.
Yeah.
How does infield dirt qualify for capital improvement, for capital improvement, I don't understand what you're like, if it's what it is, in my mind, it's just an expensive maintenance, I don't think it qualifies. How does it qualify as a tangible?
Well, Mr. Kinsheriff.
Sure, unless it's considered a land improvement.
It's not just dirt, it's, can be moved, it can be re-appropriated into other areas, it's not just dirt, that's.
Well, to be honest with you, we're splitting it out now, it's going to be separate from the capital improvement, so I think it's a moot point.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it's a moot point. Mr. Valkovic, Mr. Valkovic.
Um, Chair of Parks and Fields, um, this is the capital article, I did bring it up with the Capital Improvement Committee for this reason, to make a definition, right? This infield mix saves us volunteer hours, as Mr. Kinsheriff recommended, it includes the playability, but it also saves, ballfields have to be refurbished with new mix every year, to the tune of $20,000 a year per complex. We have three in town, do the math. We save that in perpetuity going forward, and this is why this article is important. We were just asking the town to help us out with this one reason, that ARPA funds weren't eligible.
Okay, uh, excuse me, hey, I'm the Chair, I just wanted to introduce myself. No, that's so that people aren't having a conversation. Your answer, your question has been answered, Mr. Young, and, and it's a moot point anyway because it's being moved to a separate article.
It was really answered.
Well, it was answered to my satisfaction, I'm sorry if it wasn't answered to yours. It's not going to be on the capital improvement matrix, it's being moved to a separate article funded from ARPA, um, which it, we know that it is an eligible ARPA expense, and that's really all the board needs to, so, now, for, so, since it's going to be two separate articles, do we want to refer both to town meeting?
I would say, I personally would like to see one through four, as, that's Article 17, defer to town meeting.
Yep.
And I'd like to, uh, not to step on your toes here, but.
Oh, you go right ahead, and I'll second you.
Make a motion to recommend, um, the parks and fields, infield mixed dirt.
That's going to be Article 18.
All right, so let's take Article 17, and I will entertain a motion, which it sounds like everybody wants to.
I move to recommend that we refer that to town.
Town meeting, okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that? Okay, great. And then Article.
It's going to be 18.
Well, why don't we say TV?
17A.
17B, love it. Article 17B, I will entertain a motion for that.
So, this is 17A, and we just rolled it on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hill.
So, 17B is the infield dirt.
Correct. I will entertain a motion on that.
I move to recommend.
Second.
On, any further discussion, okay. All in favor? Okay, great. All right, now, let's circle back. Did you have any info for us?
Oh, oh, yes.
For Article 13, which we now are going to try to fund from ARPA funds.
So, here's what the breakdown will be in I-2, Mr. Davis, for water superintendents, water's outside.
Yep.
So, for the fire department, it'd be $11,765.
Okay.
For the water department, it'd be $11,765, which he recommended water surplus, I guess would be their funding source.
Are they going to meet on this, because?
They're going to have to, and he and I will talk more about it tomorrow.
Well, but we, we have to, we're shutting this down.
Yeah, I mean, we have to amend it on town meeting floor.
Okay.
We do amend it on town meeting floor.
All right, okay.
And then for the police station, it's $31,692 for the police station.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, okay. I'm looking to you, Mrs. Rain, to make this motion.
I, I'm.
So, let's, Ms. McDowell, do you have, for clarification, how we're going to reward the article?
How much money do we have in the ARPA funds? Because that's $28,000 left over, you said, and just the police station, 31?
Yeah, so it's going to be, we only have 28,000.
So, 28 from ARPA, um, and then it's going to be 3,000.
Maybe 16,000 from, 16 something from free cash.
So, the town will vote to transfer, how much for ARPA?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand. How much did you say from water?
Uh, $11,765.
$11,765 from water surplus.
16.
And are we okay making, having an article that's our article and isn't a water article, spending water money? Does that question just make sense?
I don't think we can.
We can't spend their money.
We can't spend their money.
Well, that's why I'm saying, do we need to break it out separately?
Yeah, I think that water's going to have to have their own article.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
I think, yeah, yeah, it's going to have to be fire and police with it.
Okay.
That's fine, yeah.
All right, so can you?
13A and 13B.
Yeah, so we're going to do a 13A and 13B.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Mr. Davis about that.
All right, so 13A will be $11,765 from water surplus for the wells.
And that'll be B.
That will be B, sorry.
Oh, that'll be B.
That'll be B.
You use water.
And then 13A will be the difference.
Thousand plus 11, 765.
Yeah, hold on.
All from ARPA?
Forty-three thousand, four fifty-seven.
Twenty-eight is from ARPA.
Yeah, 28 from ARPA, the rest from free cash.
So, the 11, 765 for police will be from free cash.
Yes.
Wait, so.
It'll be more than that.
Yeah, it'll be, and it'll be more than that, so.
No, it's, it's, um.
If I want to verify.
16,000 roughly would be from free cash. Exactly, I'm lucky.
So, we have 31.
It's $15,457 from free cash, okay?
Say that again?
It's, uh, $15,457 from free cash, $28,000 from ARPA, and that's for the fire and police, okay? And, which is going to be 13A. And then 13B is $11,765, which is coming from water surplus. So, Mrs. Rain, did you want to make that first motion to?
I move to recommend Article 13A.
So, uh, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Fantastic.
We can't do 13.
I think we have to ask.
13B, we can vote, we can hypothetically vote to place it, and, and we can hypothetically vote to recommend and remove it if it's not forthcoming.
With the water department.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, place and recommend?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying we can hypothetically do that, nobody's made the motion.
So, shall I move to, um, place Article?
You can place, you can move to place and recommend at the same time.
And recommend.
There you go.
If the water department.
Contended upon the water department timely voting to do so.
That makes me feel, okay, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. That was extremely complicated. All right, now, we're going to just move right along, and it's going to be smooth sailing from here on in. So, we've got Article 18, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend general bylaw, Article 2-9, Financial Section 3E, authorize revolving funds, to add to the following revolving fund to the table, and its conservation for $10,000. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second. All in favor? Okay. And this is Article 19, um, and this is to place, um, property in conservation, it's Assessor's Map 67, lots 15 and 15A. I will entertain that motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 20, um, additional properties, Assessor's Map 88, lots 7 and 8, into the care and custody of conservation. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Fantastic, we're clipping along here. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or raise an appropriate $30,000 to replenish the conservation fund. an appropriate thirty thousand dollars to replenish the conservation fund. Um, hmm, I mean...
So that was not one that he picked on?
It wasn't one that he picked. It, it, it is thirty thousand dollars, but I'm just wondering...
Didn't we...
Didn't, can we...
Didn't we split that last time?
We did, and I think they came back at us with this increased number. Mr. Hill, you might have some inside, you know, information for us, being a member of the esteemed Conservation Commission. Did you want to chime in?
The Conservation Commission came up with, basically, in order to, you know, be able to pay what needs to be coming in.
So, I mean, do we, this seems like a relatively round number, so I'm wondering, do we have specific earmarks that, that they're planning on doing, or are they just wanting to get this money so that they can plan to do some projects?
I think a lot of it is specific earmarks, but then it was rounded, rounded up from that, but it wasn't rounded up a lot.
To a nice round number. I, I do remember at the last town meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about how important conservation has become in town, given the, the land that's left to be developed is often conservationally contentious.
And not only that, but let's face it, we have a lot of conservation land. It requires upkeep. It requires trailblazing, it requires, it requires maintenance, and we've got a, a Hail and Hardy Conservation Commission, which we haven't had for years. No offense to prior Conservation Commissioners, who is willing to do this work, and I mean, we've got the Plymouth County, you know, well, now we're calling it High Street Park, I just got conflicted there. High Street Park, we've got new boardwalks there, we've got, you know, a lot of work is getting done, so I, I feel like, you know, we've got these well-intentioned volunteers, we're asking them to do a job, and what do we do? We're not gonna give them the resources to do it, so... I know I just argued both sides of the fence, but I just...
Well, my, my thought is, since FinCom didn't pick on it...
They didn't.
We ought to recommend.
Yeah. They could come back and tell us they don't recommend it, and they were gonna be fighting on town meeting floor about it.
There's still plenty of time.
Yeah.
I think conservation's way too important to not fund it, so I think we have to recommend.
Okay, alright.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty-five thousand from the sum appropriated at the October third town meeting, compact to replacement, to replace the, to supplement the FY 2024 budget voted on May first, 2023 annual town meeting. And this is for the Board of Health, and it's for salaries and expenses in the two, to the two hundred and fifty-five thousand. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, that brings us to twenty, oh, I just skipped over a page. That, that brings us to twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Camp Kwani retained earnings, the amount to fifty thousand dollars to be added to the May annual town meeting 2023, Articles twelve salaries. And this was because they need...
This is different?
But, oh, wait a minute.
There's a line stricken from it.
From one of you guys, throw, throw me a bone. Here we go. Alright, I got it. Thanks, sorry about that. To see if the town will vote to transfer from Camp Kwani retained earnings, the amount to fifty thousand dollars to be added to the supplement, added to, added to supplement Camp Kwani salaries, or take any other action relative thereto. When the budget was established, it was not known that Cranberry Cove would be open for swimming, swim lessons, et cetera, et cetera, so, okay. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor? Alright, great. Uh, twenty-four, this is the infamous boardwalk brickwork article for the library, for twenty thousand dollars.
And I'm also gonna use the same logic here, that FinCom didn't say anything wrong about it.
He picked the big-ticket items.
He did pick the big-ticket items, and I do think that we have to make sure that things are safe.
We can't have a trip hazard with everybody, and particularly seniors going there.
So I move to recommend.
Yeah, okay. Second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I mean, it's, yeah.
That's, that's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah. Um, talk about penny-wise and pound-foolish, you know? Um, alright, twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to transfer nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-eight from ARPA for the installation of a three-seven-tier rotary filing cabinets, two shelving units with a hundred and twenty-five shelf guides, this is very, very specific, there'll be no doubt whether we've gotten the right type of filing cabinets here, in the Select Board and Town Administrator's Office. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of money in the amount of seventy-six thousand for stormwater management and MS four permit-related items. Now, Mr. Sullivan did not mention this either, it's seventy-six thousand dollars, but it's required.
I know.
So we can't mess around with this, but, um, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I believe this brings us to, no, not yet, okay.
A zero-turn mower.
Yep, to Article twenty-seven, which is a, from free cash, for a forty-eight-inch, twenty-two horsepower, commercial skag zero-turn mower, and it's for ten thousand five hundred dollars for the highway department.
I move to recommend.
Second.
All in favor? Fantastic. And this brings us to Article twenty-eight, which was the other one called out by Mr. Sullivan, and again, they may vote not to recommend several of the articles we recommended tonight.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
We can, we can re-vote before town meeting also, and no, it's not always consensus. Sometimes we, we stay in our swim lane, and there is some natural friction between the FinCom and the Select Board, although we generally have the same objectives, you know, they're our financial team. Article twenty-eight is a hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for the roadway surface crack sealing of Route fifty-eight, and Mr. Shaw made an extremely compelling and passionate, you know, plea here in his explanation, that fifty-eight was reconstructed over twenty-five years ago, and that doing this would, you know, would...
Prolong the life.
Prolong the life, yeah.
And this usually comes from free cash, this type of maintenance stuff?
Yes. Yep.
Um, I, I move to recommend.
Second.
Ms. Green, would this be eligible for the other bucket of ARPA money from Plymouth County?
I, I would say no.
Okay.
Something like this.
I'm grasping at the stars.
However, I, I can also add that, I, I know Chairman Sullivan had mentioned pushing some of this off to possibly May. Based on what we've seen happen with other towns, with roads that flooding has caused roads to collapse, pot, um, not potholes, but sinkholes, things like that.
Oh, yeah, yep.
The reason I, I believe that this is on October, so that the highway can move forward and get this done before the winter sets in.
I agree.
So if there are potholes and things like that, these crack, this, this sealing system will address that, so hopefully, going through the winter, which they're forecasting to be a tough one, we won't have larger issues if we wait until May and then try and do this, but we might end up looking at roadway repairs rather than just sealing the cracks.
Alright, so that's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so what is the board's will on that?
We're gonna, we have a motion, a second?
Well, we don't have a motion. You did make it, okay. Sorry, we got so sidetracked, I didn't hear you. Okay, and you seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Article twenty-nine, which is the infamous Litchfield Lane, Proudfoot Way, making it a public way, which is our, the article we wrote, not the citizens' petition. I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then the Article thirty, which is the citizens' petition, we already voted to defer that to town meeting. And really, hopefully, we'll pass it over because Article twenty-nine will pass. Is there anything else that we should be thinking about, or that is giving people heartburn or angst? Okay. Um, Mr. Kent, or if any final words of wisdom or encouragement?
Exactly, we go, let's, you guys are in good, good position. I mean, compared to when I was here last time, it seems like it's, like, really organized and just... I think you guys, it's only, it's seven hundred and twelve, today, you know, come second. I think you guys are in good shape, ready to, ready to go, take on review.
Well, and that's a good point, and again, we bow down to Ms. McDowell and Ms. Green and the, you know...
And yourself.
And yourself, and the finance team, and Kate Federoff, and Beth Sloan, and everybody else that's helped, but, but Ms. McDowell was extremely assertive about deadlines this year, and I think we can now see...
What that does.
Yes, we can see the fruit of our labors, and it's such a beautiful thing, so we're gonna duplicate it now, every town meeting and special town meeting. So, well done. That was not easy to enforce that. So with that, we still have the town meeting warrant open. Is it your recommendation, Ms. Green, that we, we have to close it, right, so that it can be posted by the constable on Friday? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to close the special town meeting warrant for October second, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And, Ms. Green, to the extent that there are any updates, for instance, we hear back from water, that, I don't, hopefully, they're meeting, I don't know what frequency they meet, and hopefully, they're on board with us, I can't imagine they wouldn't be. It's a pretty small dollar amount and pretty large benefit. So if we hear back from them, and then, can you just double-check with Ms. Federoff about the, because I, I wanna be responsive to Mr. Weeks's concern, is Ms. Federoff comfortable that, that that article from CPC would, would stand up against a challenge? I think we'll put it that way.
Okay. Will do, yes.
Hopefully, she doesn't ask us who's gonna challenge it, because I don't have that answer. Were there any other kind of loose little ends that we wanted to follow up on? Okay. I'm feeling pretty good about where we're at, I think it's great. Alright. And then that brings us back to our agenda, which of course, I cannot find because I need it. Here we go. Alright.
Are there some appointments?
And we've got some appointments. We have an appointment for Leonard Sapola, and I apologize, sir, if I, thank you, Mr. Kent, Sheriff, and if we hear a primal scream, we'll know things aren't going well with FinCom up there. Okay. Appoint Leonard Sapola as a member of the Parks and Fields Commission for a three-year term, and in your packet, you'll see the application from Mr. Sapola. And did anybody have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Sapola or meet with Mr. Sapola, because that is one of the things that the board has set as a kind of, you know, preliminary matter?
Well, I, I was hoping that the Chairman, Adam, I'm not even trying to...
Balabik.
Was going to be here to, to talk of this gentleman, because I had not met with him, so...
Okay.
But he, he seems to have left, so I cannot introduce him.
Alright, well, if, if, if you don't mind just calling and, you know, and kind of kicking the tires a little bit on that, Ms. Green, or having Ms. McDowell do that, that would be fine. We just need somebody from our office to reach out and, and, you know...
So we are not, we're gonna defer this?
We're gonna defer that, yep, because we did set as a preliminary matter that we need to talk to everybody who's applying, just to, you know, make sure that they're on the up and up. And I'm certainly not suggesting Mr. Sapola, or is not, I do not know him. Okay, then that brings us to the resignation of Teresa Sancho-Lucia from Community Preservation Committee. And I wanna say that I had the privilege of serving with Ms. Sancho-Lucia on the Community Preservation Committee, and she brings a great deal of depth and knowledge, expertise, love of her community, and all that good stuff, so I know that, that she will continue to give back to the town in other ways, but she has put in a resignation for Community Preservation, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved with regret.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And similarly, she has tendered her resignation from the Historical Commission, and again, she's been a tremendous help there, but she is, she's not going away, she's just reinventing, and I'm sure will be giving back in a variety of ways, so I will entertain that motion.
So moved with regret.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, Ms. Green, strategic planning update, anything wild on that, or new, or...
Um, no, we, we don't have anything, and we're just waiting on Ms. Donner to see if she is available.
I actually spoke with her, and she's confirmed.
Okay, that's great, because she's rather a key component, so that is lovely.
Do we have a date on it?
Um, and, yeah, what is the date? I know that we had to save the date, but...
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, yep. Okay. Alright. Economic Development Committee, what can I say? I hope you will all join me in doing whatever you can do, whatever your spiritual guide tells you, to have the rain stay away from this, this Saturday, because we've got everything so well-planned and orchestrated, but we can't control the weather. So if it does happen to rain, then our rain date will be the twenty-third, and we will, again, prey upon all hopes that we don't have rain on the twenty-third, even though it's sort of like in the middle of hurricane season, and it all seems to be coming our way.
How will people be notified or be made aware that the...
Well, did you read your email today, Mr. Hill?
I did not.
Well, I sent you an email...
Town email?
Of town, to your town email, that said, that said, we, we, the royal we, are monitoring the weather, and that we will be in touch with you if you...
Can't believe you asked that question. Oh my goodness, unbelievable.
You read your email, Mrs. Rain.
I read, I read her email when it comes in.
Okay, it's okay, Mr. Hill, we know you have a job and a few other things going on, so...
You missed a ball.
So, no, in all honesty, I've got a distribution list, and I sent out emails to everybody that I had on my distribution list, but if you are listening to this and you are planning on participating in a handsome date, and you did not hear from me, please reach out to me, because it means something jumped the track, and I did not have you on my distribution list.
By the way, the Plymouth County Beekeeping Association has donated honey straws for handout.
Oh, that is amazing. I, I love honey straws, that's great. That's another incentive to attend.
Yes.
And modest, one of the statements I made at our last meeting was, there will be no healthy food choices, so I don't know...
Honey is health.
Exactly, so that will, that will maybe move the, move the, you know, move the needle a little bit. Okay, so, hopefully on Saturday. Mr. Weeks, anything on High Street Park Committee?
Nothing since the last time. We have a meeting tomorrow, six o'clock in Meeting Room A, I think it's meeting room A.
Okay.
So if people wanna come, feel free, open meeting.
And for those that are not hip and happening, where is meeting room A?
Up there, in one of those rooms.
In one of those rooms. Alright, so just look for the light on.
Just look for the room.
Okay, alright.
Just look for the room.
Alright, and what time is that?
Six o'clock.
Okay, great. Highway Committee, any, anything on that?
No.
No, okay. McQuan Property Reuse Committee, nothing on that.
Is a building coming down?
But the building is coming down. Oh, and so...
The fencing is up, but it's not down yet.
Oh, they haven't done anything yet?
When, when is the demo starting? I'm sure it's gonna be part of your town administrative report, but...
Um, well, we, the, the fencing is up, the playground is fenced off, so they will not, basically, nobody near the playground while the building is coming down.
And I know people have been like, oh, this is the only place I can take my little person, et cetera, et cetera, and I absolutely feel for you, but it is incredibly dangerous to have little people playing in such close proximity to the type of demolition that we're going to be doing at McQuan.
Right, exactly.
So, so we are, I wouldn't even say an abundance of caution, it's just caution. And, and I think once, if people appreciated what was gonna be happening, they probably wouldn't want their little people playing there anyway.
Right, with the big equipment that's coming in.
Yeah, but...
I would say probably next week, we will actually see the buildings start coming down. They're gonna move, they need to move in the, the big equipment. They were waiting on the fencing, which I believe went up today.
Yes.
And now they'll be bringing in the equipment, and then, so, I mean, we'll have to see what happens on Saturday with the weather, of course, the weather...
But they are not tearing the playground down?
No, no, the playground's not being touched, it's just the building.
Okay.
But there will be big equipment in proximity.
Okay, because people have also expressed concerns about some of the bricks that people purchased, that were like for loved ones and dedicated, you know, to different things, and my understanding that those are in close proximity to the playground as well, it's not our intention to destroy those either. It's not our intention to destroy those either.
There's no intention to that, no.
And if you could just, out of an abundance of caution, just reach out to the demo company and just ask that they please be cautious about that little...
Isn't there a stone for a teacher, too?
Yes.
Where is that?
I thought... Do you know where that is, Robbie? The stone for the teacher... Or Charlie, do you guys know?
It's by the... Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually been moved to the Indian Head.
Oh, okay, good.
It was moved, yes.
Okay, all right. Because, you know, we're trying to be as respectful as we can of the legacy things that are there, but we do need to take the building down.
Can I ask a question? When they take the building down, they're gonna leave the parking lots there? People are gonna be able to park to go to the playground?
Yeah, there's no intention to dig those up.
It's all going, parking lot and all, and it's all gonna be dirt. Well, then...
The parking lot's not gonna be there?
Parking lot's not gonna be there as well.
Even the part over by the playground?
Mm-mm.
So if I want to go to the playground...
Oh, so that's the part that goes around, around to the building?
Yeah.
That part, I believe, is staying.
Okay.
But the parking lot that's in front of the school...
Right. Well, that's fine, but I'm, you know, just concerned with people having access to the playground.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, okay. If you could just clarify that?
We'll clarify those, yes.
Yeah, that would be amazing. Okay. Recreation Committee, the update there is, we have one lone volunteer, Alex Stewart, still waiting for others to join him, so that we can actually have a quorum and get the committee meeting. Transfer Station Task Force, Mr. Weeks, anything shake in there?
No, I mean, we have full committee now, so we're just waiting till after Labor Day to call the first meeting. So, should be any day.
All right, sounds good. Any... Anything else? Any other update? Oh, well, before your Town Administrator Report, or...
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So the Regional Agreement Committee, there was a question at our last meeting regarding changing the possible meeting date. I did reach out to Jeff Simonak, and right now, his response is, "We need to stay at the 25th and then present it to the committee on date changes." So for right now, it's gonna remain on Monday, and he'll see if there's a way that we can change the date from meeting to another day. But they're gonna present it to the committee on the 25th.
Are you able to represent us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Why don't we stick with that until we can get further clarification? Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As long as somebody's there.
Yep. That brings us fortuitously to the Town Administrator Report, Ms. Green.
Again, it's only been a few days since our last meeting, but I do have... I'm really happy to report that I had applied for a Community Compact Grant for a capital improvement plan. I applied for $25,000, and we were awarded that grant. So as soon as I receive all the formalities and things like that, I did reach out to Frank, the Chair of the Capital Improvement Plan, Frank Smolici. He was in favor of me applying for the grant. I did inform him that we did receive the grant. I did have a quick chat with the Collins Center about this type of project. They do work with that, but we will seek out other companies who do this type of project, just so we can make sure we can get the best possible plan, a capital improvement plan for that $25,000.
Yep.
So that's exciting. The elevator maintenance and repair bid, I've got that all revamped with new dates, and will go online and be available on Wednesday, September 20. I did bid that through, put that through COMBIES with the state contractors, and we received no bid, so now it's gonna go out to everybody else. I submitted the application to ARPA for the reimbursement of the funds for the first payment for the McQuan demolition, which was $499,935. And that is for the completed best disabatement process. So I did put that through ARPA. And if we... The application, once it is approved, that we will be reimbursed the $418,000 that is in ARPA for us, for revenue loss category. Over the last few days, I have had to attend to personal matters, public records requests. I participated. The Parks and Fields had a bid for the middle school field renovations, which they received an earmark for, for some funds, and then they received community preservation funds for another part of it. So that took place.